Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 12, 2013 Marquette City Commission Meeting. This is the annual organizational meeting of the City Commission. And in accordance with the City Charter, Section 2.2, the City Clerk is to preside over the proceedings through the point when the mayor and mayor pro tem are elected, at which point the new mayor will preside over the meeting. With that, if everyone will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we'll have the roll call. Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Mayor DePietro.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neemee.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
And Commissioner Kambenzi. And at this time, we'll have the comments of the outgoing Commissioners. Commissioner Snyder.
City Clerk, may I ask Commissioner Snyder to meet me up at the lectern first?
Certainly, Mayor.
Thank you.
You didn't ask my permission.
Have I already talked to your mother?
Fair enough.
Come on over here so you can get in light here. No, over here more.
Is that better?
Yeah, okay.
What are you looking at?
City Clerk, could you have the cameraman get Jason on TV here on the screen?
Yes, Your Honor. If the cameraman's listening, if you would position to the podium.
Cameraman.
Maybe not.
I'm not going to present this to him until we get this in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyways, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Commissioner Jason Schneider, Marquette City Commissioner, from November 2010 through November 2013. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community, which doesn't say much because there's a lot of things Jason's done in the last three years. You know, got a lot of things done, and there was a lot of things, and he was very impressed with the computer as we upgraded it. And at the last meeting, he wanted to really give the City Clerk a hug for getting that done within three years. And after the cameras and the media left, he did give the City Clerk a nice hug. But Jason, this isn't about us, this is about you. So, go ahead, you had the floor at this time. Okay, hold that up, hold that up so your mother could see it, too.
I think she got it.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, you got the floor.
All right. I guess I'll take this as my Commissioner comment, although it feels a little bit odd to be doing it from up here rather than over there. But I guess I should get used to that in the years to come. I'll have to be standing over here at the podium there. I at first thought that I was going to write some sort of small speech to say thank you to everybody, but I really recognize that, to me, what's really important is the two new City Commissioners and our mayor, who will also be exiting after almost nine years of service. And I think there's a lot of significance there, and I don't, I didn't want to take up too much. But I do want to say just a few things. When I ran for commission, if any of you remember seeing my comment in the Mining Journal, I didn't actually expect to win. I don't think most people expected me to win. When I ran, it was because I wanted, I wanted to crack the door open for people who had never really thought about running before or thought about getting involved in city service. I didn't run with an agenda. I didn't have anything specifically that I wanted to accomplish. I just wanted people to think that this is our city government, and just because I'm young or alternative or have a different viewpoint than most people who get on the commission, you know, I can still be involved. And if you look at some of the boards and committees that we have, if you look at the election of Sarah Kambenzi and I think the election of Sarah Reynolds, I think that door has been cracked open, and I'm very, very excited to see that happen for our city. I've often said that if it was an entire commission of people like me, the City of Marquette would be in a lot of trouble. So what I didn't expect when I ran was how influential the rest of the Commissioners in the City of Marquette would be on myself. Working with the various Commissioners who are currently sitting and those who have left has really, really been an incredible educational experience for me. Outside of the Peace Corps, it's probably the most valuable thing I've ever done. It's taught me to bite my tongue, it's taught me to speak more diplomatically, and it's really gotten me to truly appreciate a diverse amount of opinions. So I really, really appreciate all of your patience in dealing with me and all of your sense of humor and seriousness and all of that. It's been, it's been a great honor to serve with all of you and to work with city staff and represent the people of Marquette. Maybe I hope to do it again in the future. I am looking forward to a little bit of downtime, but don't expect it to be down too much. You probably will all receive personal phone calls from me when I find issues that are important. But other than that, I really want to welcome the two incoming Commissioners. You guys have your work cut out for you. I feel I was really fortunate when I came on three years ago. There really weren't any hot-button, big issues on the table, and now you get all of them. So, you know, there's no shortage of that. You guys will have to play a catch-up game really, really quickly. But having been elected, I've got a lot of faith in this community and who they choose to represent them, and I think both of you are very, very fine candidates, and I'm looking forward to seeing where the commission goes with your leadership. So with that, thank you to the residents of Marquette and the Commission.
And we thank you also for your three years of service. Appreciate it very much. And at this time, I'll stay up here while Mayor Pro Tem Bob Neemee gives me a certificate. Thank you.
Mayor DePietro, it's my distinct honor to give you this certificate of appreciation on behalf of the city. It's presented to Johnny DePietro, Marquette City Commissioner, from November 2005 to November 2013. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community, and you certainly have done that. You've been on the commission for eight years, two regular terms and a two-year term just after the recall, so you've been around here a long time, and I've certainly appreciated serving with you on the commission. And I'm not sure how we're going to replace you. That's not to detract from the two great candidates that are going to be stepping up, but we certainly are going to miss you, Johnny. And on that behalf, I'd like to send you, present you with the certificate.
Thank you very much. Most of everything I was going to say, Commissioner Schneider must have read my notes, so way to go, Commissioner Schneider. But I do want to thank everybody, you know. I mean, everybody's been awesome, not, I mean, not just the residents, but the Commissioners, the past and the present. And one of the things I wanted to thank was all of the residents throughout the City of Marquette, Marquette County, the UP. No matter where we go as Commissioners, everybody's got an opinion about what they think we should do, regardless of where they live. So, and I take that to heart. I really like to listen to what people have to say, and I enjoy very much hearing their issues and concerns. So, one of the things that Commissioner Schneider and I want to thank the two new Commissioners, Commissioner Reynolds, Sarah Reynolds, and Commissioner Dave Campana, is we left some issues on the plate for you to take from this point forward. So, anyways, we want to thank yous for coming aboard, and I know that you have five very good, experienced Commissioners that'll work with you throughout your three to six years. Thank you very much.
We'll take a couple minutes to transition, and the new Commissioners can approach the Diaz at this point in time.
Here, I'll leave some bait here. Like deer hunting.
The new Commissioners have now been seated, and our next item on the agenda is to swear the new Commissioners in if they'll join me back here at the table. This is the oath of office, and I'll recite it, and you can repeat after me then. You can read it off of there. And then just state your names when I say, you know, "Aye," and then state both your names, and if you want to come in a little closer, that'd be great.
You do this one at a time or together?
I was going to do them both together. Would you prefer one at a time? Okay, that's fine. Okay, raise your right hand, repeat after me. "Aye," Sarah Reynolds, or Sarah Reynolds and Dave Campana.
"Aye," Sarah Reynolds.
"David Campana."
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Marquette City Commission.
Of the Office of the Marquette City Commission.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
pass out the ballots. If each Commissioner would let us know when the ballots are completed, and if you'd initial the ballots, we seal the ballots and file them away, but we need to have you initial the ballots after you vote. And the ballots have all been handed in, and we'll tabulate the ballots and announce the results here shortly. On the first ballot cast, we have a new mayor, and that would be Commissioner Neemee. Congratulations. If you'll join me. Okay, we'll now conduct the election of the mayor pro tem, and Chief Angeli is passing out the ballots now. If you'd do the same by initialing your ballots after, when you're done voting and turn them And the ballots have been turned in, we'll have them tabulated shortly. Okay, the ballots have been tabulated, and we have a new mayor pro tem, and I'd be Commissioner Stonehouse. Would you join me up by the flags? "Aye," Frederick Stonehouse.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the orders of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Marquette according to the best of my abilities, so help me God, Frederick Stonehouse.
Congratulations.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Clerk, would you call the role of the new commission?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kambenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse.
Here.
Okay. Thank you, City Clerk.
Your pardon.
Here. The Commissioners, are there any agenda items to add or delete from the agenda? Okay, hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Kambenzi.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Kambenzi, to approve the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. The seven members of the commission are approving the agenda. The agenda's approved. Announcements, I don't have any announcements, so I guess we'll go directly to public comments, citizen comments. Three minutes per person, citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. There's not too many agenda items to speak on, so speak as you would please. And if they go to the podium in front of the dais.
Frank Chef Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. The Gurko vandal stated his remorse in a letter to the editor, but only because we caught him. He asked us to report the locations of his work so he can remove it. Since when do we work for a criminal? We'd be calling in after every walk. Instead, give him a week to remove all traces of his graffiti across town. From then on, fine him an additional $20 for each phoned-in location, $10 going to the caller. Don't sit idle while the court burdens us by giving Gurko a slap on the wrist while we're still being victimized by his eyesores. No wonder a new rash of graffiti has appeared, because the legal system encourages it. October 28th, you hosted a presentation on smart growth. The speaker's face appeared on the screens as a blotch of white, aside from the outlines of his eyes, nose, and mouth. Please replace this equipment, will you? Although the presentation centered on transportation, Mr. Millar mentioned that low-density suburban development is seldom advantageous. Compact development is better for travel, emergency response, shopping, and distribution of services. Revenue from urban infill is incredible versus the cost of outlying development. Support what's there, he explained, namely downtown, Third Street, NMU, and MGH. Long forgotten is that the commission heard the same advice free of charge over the years as subdivisions were approved, while land closer to downtown remained idle. Despite warnings of the cost to run infrastructure and of the ensuing maintenance, this board enthusiastically approved most every project. Lo and behold, an expert noted the impact a decade later. The same evening, you postponed the truck route for three months. In the meantime, logging trucks travel 35 miles an hour down Third Street at the onset of winter, and they rattle by on Lake Shore Boulevard. Yes, Mr. Coyne's role on this issue is admirable. The question remains as to why the BLP route wasn't proposed before all of the needless tension. Consider charging the trucks a user fee to offset part of her electrical increase. October 28th, Mr.'s Ryan and Coyne motioned to approve three years of BLP increases. Mr. Ryan mentioned his pension and his grandkids who consume energy as if he's one of us, when in fact, most others will have a harder time paying. He added that this is a business decision instead of political. In truth, your decision was political because you ignored public pleas from independent citizens to handle one year at a time. Furthermore, you refused to rectify your mishandling of this item in a timely manner as detailed on record. No one doubts Mr. Ryan's business expertise. What so lacked was the ability of him and six peers to put your heads together to derive it a sound business decision. Mr. Ryan merely repeated a spiel about how the BLP hired experts, choosing not to address any of the specifics from public comment, and the outlook on land use decisions is even scarier, at least from a nature standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
Hello. My name is Mike Beck. I'm a resident of the City of Marquette. I'd like to welcome the new City Commissioners to the board and the change of hands here at the City Hall. However, I've come down to address the City Commission, and I'd say that I'm very concerned about the direction the city's taking with plans for trucking through the city. This proposed hydro haul route looks to destroy about three miles of the No Quamonon Trail in North Country Trails access, the only convenient trails access out of the city limits. For a 3% temporary increase in truck traffic. Now, I understand there's calls about public safety and concerns about safety along the road there, past Northern, but it's a 3% temporary increase in truck traffic. Is the City Commission willing to give away the No Quamonon Trail to truck traffic? Is this how the city's going to plan for small increases in growth around the city? What would happen if projected traffic increases were 5% or 7% on another road around town? Would the City Commission put up a "Roads Closed" sign, build a bypass around the city, enabling development or traffic to avoid the city altogether? I don't know how smart that is. I understand that fixing roads is expensive. The city receives over $1 million in state road funds every year from the same funding mechanism the counties get for road repairs. I do know it's a difficult decision to make, but paving over the No Quamonon Trail, giving away three miles of natural beauty in a very heavily monetized recreational corridor for temporary trucking consideration? I'm sorry to hear that the City Commission would be willing to do that. So I came down to just say some comments about that tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission? Any other citizens wishing to address the commission? Okay, there'll be no further citizen to address the commission. We'll move to the agenda. We have a single agenda item on our agenda, the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the minutes of the October 28, 2013 City Commission meeting. Approve the total bills payable in the amount of $1,469,523.64. And Item C, approve the 2014 City Commission meeting schedule.
Okay. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure on this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve the consent agenda. All in favors, or any further discussion? Okay. Commissioner Campana? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It's approved 7 to 0. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, again, is a public comments section, three minutes per Any citizens desiring to address the commission?
Good evening. Name's Johnny DePietro, 1803 Prescott Isle, and I'd like to congratulate our new mayor, Robert Neemee, and Mayor Pro Tem, Fred Stonehouse, and welcome Sarah Reynolds and Dave Campana onboard. And like I say, there's a lot of good expertise on this board, so don't be afraid to ask questions, because this is not a boring position that yous got into. You know, I mean, it's got a lot of things that they have to address for 2014, 2015, so I just want to congratulate all of you selected to your new seats, and thank our city manager, Bill Vida, for getting the ship on course with our Commissioners once he came onboard. And I think we're probably one of the best cities in the UP, if not in the State of Michigan, as far as having all our ducks in a row, as far as financially, having our city employees all on the job, and our infrastructure is very important. Wait till you get into this budget session and go through every single item from every -- single department. And we always encourage the public to attend these, but every once in a while, one or two will show up, and after the five-hour session, they'll say, "This was like watching paint dry," because it's so tedious, and there's a lot of work involved. So anyways, make sure that you encourage the residents to come on in 2014 for the budget sessions, and make sure that you answer the phone and emails for all the incoming inquiries that you'll have. If anybody has any issues after midnight, have them send their email and phone calls to Mayor Pro Tem. That's what I did with my Mayor Pro Tem. "Thank you very much for accepting the calls from midnight to 7:00. You are awesome." And our COP, thank you for the crowd control, excellent job. Our City Clerk, Dave Blue, our City Attorney, Ron Keefe, and all the City Department Heads and City Employees, I thank you very much. Is my three minutes up yet?
Just bow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor DePietro. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Well, he's a hard act to follow, and he will be missed.
Thank you. These are my opinions. October 28th, Mr. Neamy spoke to Mr. Snyder during a public comment on the Prescott Isle Power Plant. In addition to not listening, he stole another member's attention. At that time, I read, "Let us seize this opportunity to appoint a member to work with the Power Plant Committee to lessen the footprint of that eyesore while maintaining the reliability of our regional power grid. Ironically, you appointed Mr. Neamy to serve on the committee, just the man to whom the comment ended up being directed. Mr. Neamy's lack of manners and professionalism during public comment were appalling. He's reminded to act courteously. October 28th, the smart-growth expert advised us to ask, 'If people can live anywhere they want, why would they choose this city?' This begs the question of Mr. Ryan as to which few cities are better than Marquette, not only so I'll move there and be out of your hair, but so we can learn from how those cities excel. We can also learn from the thousands of cities who've done worst. For now, I'd rather live here than any place on earth. This is why Marquette's uniqueness is worth fighting for, as you attract a myriad of urban woes our way. Our manager holds a wealth of land-use knowledge, having witnessed the rampant sprawl of suburban DC. Sadly, he doesn't feel entitled to offer his expertise unless you ask him, and you have no incentive to ask him, because considering adjacent land uses makes your job more difficult. Compare DC's Rock Creek Park to our Hartwood Preserve, for example. In 1890, the government had the vision to establish the capital's 1,700-acre park, which seemed oversized at the time, if not unnecessary, because so much aesthetic countryside still surrounded the district. As DC grew, development surrounded Rock Creek Park for miles around. Today, the park hardly suffices for a metro of 5.8 million people. As you draw the people up here that you can muster, along with the crime that's sure to accompany them, you're advised to ponder what impact the eventual countrywide population will have on Hartwood if the entire contiguous portion isn't preserved. Your own list of objectives dictates that you look 50 years into the future. Mr. Ryan is asked again to name the cities, so I'll stop deducing that he likes my presence here. Upon mentioning this on October 28th, he shook his head "no" in classic hoity-toity fashion, to imply that he doesn't want me here. When I continued facetiously, "We'll have to sit down over coffee if he likes me this much," he uttered, "That'll never happen. The chances of a meteor striking Marquette is greater." What's incredible, though, is the very next evening, I prepared to hold the door of a coffee shop open for the couple behind me. It was Mr. Ryan, although thankfully destined for the neighboring business. But what is the chance of this happening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say a few words about Johnny that I didn't have a chance to say last time we met, but, you know, when we think back, he came onboard during a very difficult time. The recall election had just occurred, the city was in turmoil. He stepped forward, he ran for election, and he helped fill that void and provide a great period of very stable leadership on this Commission. That was a difficult job to be done at a difficult time, and he did it. And I think that he really deserves far more credit for that than very often I think we realize. He has always had a very deep concern for our citizens and worked hard to do the very, very best for them in every way. You know, one of the things you hear about Marquette, and many other places too, is that everybody knows Johnny. Everybody knows Johnny. And it's true. But it's also true that Johnny knows everybody. And what that means to me is the very deep concern he has for everybody. And that goes back, I think, truly for his caring for them. As Mayor, he was even handed with the Commissioners and with those two wishing to speak before the Commission. I know he often stifled his own thoughts to make sure that everybody else had the fullest opportunity to speak before he did. And this, too, is the mark, I think, of true leadership at that level. At various official functions, he represented Marquette very well and made us many friends. And I'm very proud to call Johnny my friend, too. I wish the very best for the future, and you will be missed. I'm very sorry to see Jason leave the Commission also. By often representing the edge of what is possible, he pushed me, and I suspect others too, to see a little bit further and understand a little bit better. And that's an important thing. It's a very good thing. And while we disagreed on some things, we agreed on many, many more. And that was heartening. But we never disagreed on our desire to do what is very best for the citizens of Marquette. And that was the goal that I think all of us have. I wish Jason the very best for the future, and that he continue to work for the best of the city. And I would certainly be remiss without welcoming our two Commissioners. I look forward to working with you both. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, nothing further, and thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I'd like to focus on the two new Commissioners. I mentioned to them both before the meeting, Marquette's kind of a unique place, and we all know this, but, you know, you elect a President in November, and he takes office at the end of January. You elect county officials, state officials. They typically take office the first of the year. You elect a City Commissioner in Marquette, and the next week, you're on the job. Not much time to get ready. And I guess I would just urge you to be independent, and always remember that you were elected by the citizens of Marquette to represent them, and not just the ones who voted for you, but all of them. And you're really not beholden to anyone but them. And that's what I've tried to live by in carrying out this assignment, and I'm sure my colleagues have too. But don't lose sight of that fact. I mean, you're here as independent people, elected by the voters, and get in there and make decisions. I think we all like to get comfortable in new assignments, and that's important, too, but there's not much time to that when you're elected to the Marquette City Commission. The other thing I would point out to you is, in the next election, three of us will be leaving, which means that in the span of three elections or two years, this whole Commission will have turned over. So better hit the ground running, because we're going to need experienced Commissioners. So good luck to you, and I'm sure you'll do well, but as I said, never lose sight of the fact that you have been elected, and the citizens expect you to represent them, and I think you'll do a great job. So, good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank both Jason and Johnny for their years of service. I'll pick on Jason first. I met Jason 10 years ago, when he was really, truly a young man. And he...I encouraged him at that time to run, and I encouraged him the next time to run, and I am honored to have served with him. I have a smile on my face, because as a Commissioner, many of the folks that I have served with, I never would have known unless I had been on the Commission with them. And it has really enriched my life greatly, to become knowledgeable of their skills and become their friend. I admire Jason, some of this I said last time, so I'm repeating myself, but I don't mind, for his refreshing ideas, his critical thinking, outside the box, and always challenging my thinking. And frankly, that, to me, is a great Commissioner, if he can challenge the way you think and then come to a conclusion, a compromise. I hope that your success, Jason, continues, and I hope your success also encourages other young people to step up and serve. You've been a great Commissioner. Thank you. Moving on to Johnny, he's an example of a person, eight years ago, I didn't even know Johnny DePietro. I must have been the only person in Marquette who did not know Johnny DePietro. But when he was running, he and I ran with, I think, 14 or 17 other people after the recall, and I thought, "Well, who's this guy?" And he started to talk, and instantly I thought, "Well, he's going to get elected. He is just a great person, and he really loves this community, and he has been here for eight years." So, again, what a pleasure to become your friend, Johnny. And I, as I said last time, you're a decent, honest man, who truly loves this city, who listens to people, which is a great trait. And that's the best thing we can do as Commissioners, is listen, because that's sort of what our job is, to represent people. I want to thank you both very much for your service. You're great people, and it has been a joy to serve with you both, and I'm going to miss you. I move on to the new Commissioners, Sarah and Dave. I want to thank you for stepping up and running, and being willing to serve your community. I wish you well and much success, and look forward to serving you, and kind of to build on what Don Ryan said, is, you know, we're all serving the people and listening, and that's our job, to be helpful to them and make prudent decisions. And I think it's important to point out that you have been elected just like us. You're independent, you're nonpartisan, you don't represent a specific area of the city, and as of now, we're all equals here. So, welcome, and I look forward to becoming your friend and working with you, and really thankful that you ran. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Reynolds?
I just wanted to thank everybody in the city of Marquette who voted in the last election, and I look forward to working with the current Commissioners and being a voice for those citizens in the city of Marquette. I am sad that I don't get the opportunity to work with both Johnny and Jason, knowing them on a personal level. They are great guys, and I wish I had the opportunity to work with them at this level, but I wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Kimbensey?
Thank you. First, I would also like to welcome our two new members. I did tell them about five minutes before the meeting started that they could still run if they didn't want to be up here. You know, I, too, came on at a time where there weren't a lot of irons in the fire, but I would say this fall, we've got some serious business, so I would like to thank them for stepping up, and it will be interesting. I'd also like to congratulate our Mayor Pro Tem, Fred Stonehouse. He'll do a great job with your leadership, as well as Mayor Neamy. I would like to make one suggestion, and that is that maybe out of his extra compensation, that he buys us a new flag for the city of Marquette. Oh, it's been found. Okay. All right, I take that back. But I did bring two things with me tonight, and I've asked the City Clerk to put the first one up. And that is just two pictures I have. The first one was at the recent MML conference with Commissioners Schneider and Neamy. And lo and behold, we had another Commissioner from downstate who Jason just happened to know and get to know at a different MML meeting, and it amazed me, the connections that he made, not only at that conference, but also at everything we did together. I think I certainly look up to you, admire you for your ability to embrace anyone and everyone, and regardless of whether you know it's someone who disagrees with you or agrees with you, it's very admirable, and it's going to be missed in our Commission. And I would agree with Commissioner Coyne that you've certainly challenged me to think, even though we're of a similar generation. If there's ever been a disagreement, I don't walk away without thinking about everything you've said. So we have a lot going for you. I do hope to see you back here, or some other place where you will be very influential. And I wish you all the best of luck. So, thank you for serving with us. And Johnny, Johnny, I don't know what you're going to think of the picture I put up now, but one of the first things I noticed when I went to the first MML conference, and that's the Michigan Municipal League Conference, with Johnny, was that, again, everybody knew him, and everybody wanted to be around him. But this is a picture where the Representatives, whether they were Mayors, or Council Members, or City Managers from the UP, we would all get together and bond, and Johnny certainly led the way. And whatever differences we have in our communities, whatever similarities we have, you were right there to glue us all together. And this happened not only at our Commission meetings, but certainly everywhere we went. At the Great Lakes, St. Lawrence Seaways Conference here in Marquette, I think anyone that could have taken you home with them to be their mayor would have. You know, you're just, you are the pulse of Marquette, and I'd like to thank you for your eight years of service, and for certainly being a good friend and a leader in our community. And I wouldn't be surprised if we find you back here, so don't get too bored in these coming two years. I'd like to also thank Mike Coyne for suggesting wearing the blue circle pins in honor of the National Diabetes Month. I hate to say I forgot mine tonight, but certainly would like to thank Commissioner Coyne and the rest of the Commission for being willing to do that on my behalf, and certainly all the other citizens who are diabetics. I just want to make one comment about the Commission as a whole. When I served on the Charter Commission, I thought to myself, and I made the comment often, that I won't find another group or a Commission or any other thing I volunteer for quite as rewarding. And I think tonight, I can take that back. And regardless of the dialogue, the disagreements, the agreements, what is magical about the discourse that happens up here is that you always will have seven people who care about the city the most. And I have found that true with the current Commission going out, and I know it will be true with the current Commission coming in. And that is one thing, regardless of our differences, we're all up here trying to do the best for the city. And I'd like to thank everyone for recognizing that, because it is a tough job. And last but not least, I will be gone for our next meeting. I regret to inform everyone that I will be out in sunny California, so I apologize for that, but I'm looking forward to a little break. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bensy. Commissioner Campana?
Jason Snyder and Johnny DePietro are going to be a hard act to follow. They did a good job here, and everybody knows it, and that speaks highly of them. That being said, I'm very excited to be here. I hope to help the city, and even though Mike Coyne says he works 10 hours a day to do this, I still look forward to it. I think we have good Commission. Everybody seems to get along. We have a good City Manager. He's doing a very good job. And City Staff, we have a good City Staff. So I think, you know, it's going to be, hopefully, an easy job to do. We hope. So again, I'm just happy to be here. There's been a lot of good people here, sitting here in the past years, and, you know, it's an honor to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. I don't know where to begin. Jason, I want to thank you for your service. I'm not going to say a lot, but I remember one work session, we were talking about computers or social media or something like that. And I realized that even though I had two children in the 20s, Jason taught me a lesson, that we older guys on the Commission don't really understand how the young people get their information. And it's a, it made an impression on me, and it's an impression I'll carry further. Our new Charter mandates a information...
Our new charter mandates a information plan or ordinance, which we'll be discussing in an upcoming work session, and I look forward to that. And for that, I thank you, Jason, and that's a rare twist on things that I never thought I would get. And for that, again, I thank you, and we will miss you on the commission. Johnny, you were my mentor. I've got to get a little pad of paper so that I can mark down the names of people and check them off so that we know who's up next in the comments. And for that, I thank you for your service on the commission. I recall a couple of years ago, looking at who's up in one year, the year you were running for your last term, and I was thinking, well, prior to that, I was thinking, well, gee, you're term limited. And then I realized that you had a partial term and a full term, and I was so pleased that you were on the commission for three more years. I've certainly enjoyed it. We're going to miss you, and I look forward in the future to voting for you, for you again when you, when you run. So thank you. My, the new two, two new commissioners, I look forward to serving with you. I'm sure you'll, you'll be adequate replacements for Johnny and Jason, although they are a tough act to follow. I thank the commission for, for your confidence in me in electing me mayor. I'm both honored and humbled. I will do my, my very best. We've got a lot of challenges, a lot of issues that are coming up, but it's up to us to turn those challenges into opportunities for our city. And I'm confident that we can, we can do that. We work together well. The two new commissioners, I think, are a good, good fit, will be a good addition, and I look forward to a good, good year. With that, city manager, any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd really like to share all of the sentiments that I've heard at the bench here this evening. I'd like to start by thanking, not so much the same way I think we did at the last commission meeting, but I'd like to thank Commissioner Schneider and Commissioner DePietro. Commissioner Schneider was a very interesting person to get to know. I won't speak about the things that I know we've all shared through our time together, but he was somebody who demonstrated absolute commitment to his ideals, and when he set his mind to getting something done, he got it done. And the Dead River Derby certainly is one good proof of that, outside of his information policy and his commitment to trying to stay on board with the, the community development work that he's doing now with the Searle Institute. So yeah, one more example that I'm sure we can count on seeing him again, one way or another. Mayor DePietro is very personally inspirational to me. He's, he shared many times, I don't think he ever said it at the DIAS, but when this was the old Catholic high school, this particular room was the detention center. And, and I'm not saying he spent a lot of time here, but, but he said he spent a lot of time here. And so he's probably collectively gotten about eight years' worth of service in this particular room, and actually 40 years of service, when you count all of his time with the city staff, that, that he's either been personally involved in dialogue or personally involved in the, in the city of Marquette. And that's a rare commitment and a rare tenure at any level of government. But I want him to remember, most importantly, that when I brought my family here, even though that I have many generations of family who lived in Marquette, my immediate family, my wife, my children, had, had not ever really done anything more than visit here. And so they didn't have a safety net outside of the Vida Clan. And the DePietro family was, was very inviting. They reached out early. They tried to help us get reconnected with the community. They extended us every personal kindness, and that's something that eased my transition back into the area greatly and helped put my mind at ease so I could focus on the work of the city and the things that we all, we all have before us. And so I'll never forget that kindness and that outreach, and I really deeply appreciate that from the mayor and from his whole family. From the, from the commissioners coming in, congratulations. Transition is always bittersweet, but if you look at the back of the room, the plaques next to the door extend about 175-year unbroken history of people who've sat in these chairs before you. And so we used to like to tease Commissioner Schneider from time to time to think 50 years in the future, but it's not hard to think almost 175 years in the past. And the opportunity to serve with, with any group of people who've elected to take on public service in my family has always been viewed as a tremendous virtue and a very honorable thing to do. And so every time I get a chance to sit here and the opportunity that I have to serve the commission and the city is something that I, I feel very strongly, personally, very deeply about. And I'm looking forward to getting to know you and helping your success and the commission's success moving forward. And then finally, I'd like to thank you, Your Honor, and our new Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Stonehouse. For, another way maybe to say what Commissioner Ryan had said earlier is, a majority of the members now on the commission have for this, for their current tenure, one year or less of experience. And next year, the entire commission will have two years or less of experience, not just as commissioners, but, but as a body working together. And so it's very important that we have folks who might have been around for a little bit longer, who can help demonstrate the kind of leadership and the kind of deliberations that I know we're going to need as we move forward, because we have a lot of big issues before us and a lot of hard work to do. And I know that burden sometimes falls more on the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem than the rest of the commission, and I appreciate your standing up and taking that job on. And I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, city manager. City Attorney Keefe or Chief Police Angeli? Any comments? Okay. Well, no further business come before the commission, then we're adjourned.